Call the council meeting to order, please be seated. All right, a motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on August the 28th, 2017. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carry. A motion to adopt the minutes of the public hearing zoning held on August the 28th, 2017. Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carry. Proclamations, Councilor Wang, you are reading out a proclamation in regard to prostate cancer awareness month.
Thank you, your worship. Prostate cancer awareness month, whereas prostate cancer is the most common cancer to affect Canadian men, and whereas one in seven Canadian men will be diagnosed with a disease in his lifetime, and whereas as stated, 23,100 Canadian men have been diagnosed with prostate cancer last year, and whereas the survival rate for the prostate cancer can be over 90% when detected earlier, and whereas those with a family history of this disease, or those of African and Caribbean descent, are at great risk of developing prostate cancer. And whereas prostate cancer can in Canada recommends that men get a PSA test in their 40s to establish their baseline. Now therefore Derek Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim September 2017 as prostate cancer awareness month in the city of Burnaby. Here's the proclamation this week.
Thank you very much, Councilor Wang, and I urge all men to get in and get their prostate checked after they're 50 years old. I know that I have been through regular examinations, as I also go through a chemical test and have been even through the biopsy process myself, and it is a very important issue. Most common cancer for men is prostate cancer, and all of us have to be well aware of this. I know that it's an unpleasant thing to go through, and I know that most men aren't very attentive to looking after that issue, but I want to urge everyone, it is so curable if it's found early, but it can be so deadly if you don't catch it. So please, do everything you can to make sure that you look after your family by looking after yourself, get your prostate checked, make sure your doctor is aware that you're interested in looking after that issue. All right, now, a motion to resolve into a committee of the whole. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carry. The first report is from the Sustainable City Advisory Committee, and Councilor Dollywell, you're the chair of that committee.
Thank you, your worship. I, on behalf of the committee, I move the following two recommendations. That council approve the implementation approach for the environmental sustainability strategy and community energy and emissions plan, and phase one of policy priorities as outlined in this report. Number two, that a copy of this report be sent to the Planning and Development Committee, Financial Management Committee, and Parks and Recreation and Culture Commission for their information. Thank you, your worship. Just a very quick background on this, for this report. Burnaby's environmental sustainability strategy, known as ESS, and community energy and emission plans, henceforth known as CEEP, were approved by council in November of last year. With this report, with that report, council also authorized staff to develop an implementation plan, which would identify timelines, priorities, lead, and lead responsibility, recommended process, and approaches and resources required. Your worship, this report is about those commitments that were made at the time last report came to council. The overall vision guiding the ESS and CEEP is for Burnaby to be a global leader in protecting and regenerating ecosystems, supporting a healthy and prosperous community. That vision, this vision is supported by the ESS and CEEP goals and strategy. The CEEP also includes targets for reducing community greenhouse gases, a city-only target, city-only meant that just what we can do corporately, of 5% below, reduction of 5% below 2010 levels by 2041, and a city plus others, which includes other organizations and citizens, that be a target of 30% below 2010 levels by 2041. As you can see, your worship, when we all work together, the city plus everyone else could make a big difference to where we are, we were in 2010. And further, your worship, in this one, I would just like to outline very quickly recently, our recent and ongoing initiatives, your worship, and for, under this initiative, the ESS and CEEP were developed in recognition that the city has already taken action and leadership in a number of areas, and will continue to do so as a part of ongoing programs and complementary initiatives. Some examples of past successes in environmental sustainability across the city are provided in the discussion paper that was discussed in the, when ESS process was introduced in 2013, and additional recent initiatives are also summarized, were in the council report in 2016. Basically, what was, taking some further action on climate action charter, and some progress has been already made with the quick start since ESS and CEEP were approved. And the report lists those things, your worship. One, basically, is the evaluation and improvement, some also further discussion on reporting of implementation. Worship, in this report, the committee is recommending that policy, phase one of policy development, those are the three priorities listed on page 29, your worship, that is to begin work on green building, first one is the green building policy, and the second one is electric vehicle policy, and the third one is corporate sustainability. All those are, were previously part of the ESS and CEEP commitments that the council approved. Worship, so, the idea here is to start on these one, but the timeline would depend between now and perhaps the following three years, because it has to be part of the development department's priority setting, and, and other things that exist, that now, but, but the staff will bring forward further reports, your worship, to council on each one of these policies as they are developed. So that's a brief introduction to these. So I move this report, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Dollywell, and I, I want to point out about this report that it is a very ambitious agenda that's being taken on by our staff under the guidance of the Sustainable City Committee, and the, the reason it's so ambitious is because we're growing so rapidly, and to try to decrease our impact on, on greenhouse gases, our carbon emissions, while we grow, is very, very challenging. One would expect to see a constant increase in our impact on greenhouse gases as a result of the growth we're experiencing in our community, but to do that growth while we keep struggling to make sure that we remain below 2010 standards is a very high mark to achieve. And I think the report reflects on the fact that, well, we can do our bit in the city of Burnaby through green buildings, through utilizing the methodologies we have available in our zoning process to make requirements on development as it comes through. Ultimately, we need cooperation at several different levels. We need the federal and provincial governments working with us, and we need citizens working with us to be able to achieve those results. If all of us work together, we can hit a 30% reduction by 2041, but alone, we are still able to maintain no further impact, in fact, a lessening impact on greenhouse gases in our city. And I continue to applaud our staff for making that happen. I think a lot of it is because it's a result of better planning, it's also the result of better technologies and improvements in technologies that are being utilized, but no one can rest on their laurels. If we want to make a real difference in setting an example for the rest of the world, here in an area of the world where we utilize more energy and more resources than anywhere else, it's important for us to constantly have this in mind while we're implementing public policy. And I can tell you that over the course of the last few years, there has been an intensification of our efforts in that regard, to make sure that our policies reflect the most modern attitudes towards avoidance of greenhouse gases. So I wanted to convey my appreciation to staff and also to your committee, Councilor Dollywell, for their continued vigilance in ensuring that we're meeting our objectives under our environmental sustainability strategy, under social sustainability strategy, and under our economic development strategy. All of those programs are being not only looked at by council, but by this group of citizens, who are checking whether or not we're walking the talk, and so far, we've been doing a very good job. All right, with that, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carry. Next report, item 4B, also from the Sustainable City Advisory Committee.
Thank you, your worship. On behalf of the committee, I move the following two recommendations. One, that this report be received for information of council. Two, that a copy of this report be forwarded to Dr. Amit Barmal, Medical Health Officer for Burnaby, Ms. Sheila Finnemore, Executive Director of Burnaby Health Services, Ms. Beljinda Naring, School Trustee, Burnaby Board of Education, and Dr. Davidicus Wong, Burnaby Division of Family Practices. Thank you, your worship. Burnaby Healthier Community Partnership, HACP, is a partnership of the city of Burnaby, Burnaby School District, Fraser Health, and Burnaby Division of Family Practices. It aims to promote a healthier community through collaboration among those who shape the place and where people live, work, earn, and play. Worship, in 2016, 17, the steering committee met five times, as I said, those are the, the four organizations that make up of, of the steering committee, which is, which directs the work and priorities for this committee for the year, and the steering committee developed a plan for 2016, and has basically covered on two areas. The two priorities continue to be focused, one is the mental health and wellness, and number two is the physical activity and literacy. Over the last year, HACP, Health Community Partnership, had few initiatives which are covered in this report, and I'll quickly touch on them. One is the information sharing and collaboration, your worship, that's the most important aspect of, of this working together is to have information from the citizen, from school district, from the staff perspective, and family, division of family practice to be shared, and generally information sharing occurred around overdose crisis, local action team, which is the Child and Youth Mental Health and Substance Use Collaborative, and dementia-friendly community action plan. Those were the three areas that basically were, was information sharing happened, and there will be further report on the dementia-friendly community action plan, your worship, that was one of the, the initiative that was undertaken by the steering committee. And also, now, the future going forward, your worship, I should just also touch on something that the, in, in 2016, 17 program, your worship, the, the committee also undertook, Move for Health Day, Community Wellness Fair at Confederation Senior Center, Talk and Walk with Your Doc. That was another initiative which promoted, in the evening of May 10th, community members were invited to attend an inspirational presentation for mental and physical benefits, so, physical activity with Dr. Davidicus Wong. So all those things are done, obviously, with the intention of making sure that the Burnaby, in, in terms of HACP, that we continue to engage citizens as, as best as possible. For the, the year ahead, for the 2017 and 18, the HACP will focus on the following activities. Gain Walking Challenge, which would be supported through the work that builds on what was done in 2016. It's, it should be noted that, that the, the Fraser Health has announced that working, the city of Burnaby, working with New Westminster, to make a joint application for, to build on successful walking initiatives, and I believe that will be funded through Fraser Health. It looks like there's a fair amount of grant, up to 45,000, I believe, was, was received, was applied jointly, and was awarded, to continue with some of these walking challenge which, which will be undertaken. There's a community component, which is eight weeks period in spring of 2018, around Walking Challenge, school component is also attached, and then there's a walking festival, a wrap-up event. All those things here, your worship, are basically there for Burnaby, just with the following vision in mind, which is, Burnaby embraces health and wellness. All Burnaby residents and communities will be supported with knowledge and opportunities that empower them to improve their health and well-being. So this report, your worship, is, is presented to council for information, and also with copies, two others as listed earlier.
Thank you very much, Councilor Dollywell. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carry. Item 4C, please.
That, so this one, this is on the dementia-friendly community action plan, your worship, and recommendations are, that council endorse the Burnaby dementia-friendly community action plan, that a copy of this report and the Burnaby dementia-friendly community action plan be forwarded to, for information to Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission, Burnaby Public Library Board, Fraser Health, the Alzheimer Society of British Columbia, the Voices of Burnaby Seniors, and UBCM, Age Friendly Community Planning and Project Grants Program, and that a copy of this report and the dementia-friendly community action plan be forwarded to the members of the Burnaby dementia-friendly working group, along with a letter of appreciation from yourself, your worship, acknowledging the participation in the working group. Thank you, your worship. In December of 2015, the city was advised that, and that it had received a grant of $20,000 to develop the plan. This was spearheaded by the Burnaby Voice, Voice of Burnaby Seniors, your worship, and that grant was used to develop this plan. Over the course of 2016, and, and up to this point, your worship, a paramount of consultation took place. This, that included people from Fraser Health, Alzheimer Society of British Columbia, Voices of Burnaby Seniors, and, and part of that was to, first of all, I guess, create more awareness, your worship, about the dementia, what currently the way dementia has been, has existed in, in our country, our community. It noted that in 2016, Alzheimer's Society of Canada estimated there were 564 Canadians living with dementia, and this is supposed to perhaps grow to 937,000 by 2031. And that basically points out to your worship that the, as the demographics are, are getting older, Burnaby's share of currently 28, Burnaby's number of 2,800 people living with dementia will also continue to grow. Most people with dementia, up to 60%, live at home in the community. So the purpose of this report, your worship, is to be able to, to provide, educate, make people aware, who are, who are care provider, who, and the dementia patient themselves. So with the, with the help of, of receiving some grant, so this will create a bit of a, a little easiness for some people, some people who live with dementia, in terms of of going their day-to-day business as happens. So part of the plan, your worship, is called, known as a community action plan, and it's listed in, in this report, and, and well, through the discussions, it was determined that if there was a vision to be presented, it is, it's thus, your worship, the city of Burnaby is working towards becoming a more dementia-friendly community, where people living with dementia, their families and caregivers are included, connected, and supported. In developing the plan, it was recognized that the becoming a dementia-friendly community is an ongoing process that requires partnership approach, that this is not the important part, that this isn't a program that'll start and end, your worship, this is a, a start of recognition on part of our staff, on part of the, the community at large, that as we work with our community, within our community, with the dementia patients, that we continue to learn and help. This plan was constructed with the help from Alzheimer's Society of British Columbia and Fraser Health, and over the next few years, will continue to be worked to, to include in our city's policies, things, as we develop facilities that they're accessible, maybe perhaps some, some wayfinding signs throughout the city to see when people are out there who are dementia patient, that they're not lost and confused, so they can point to some way to say they can get back. They know this is north, that's south, this is how it is. So all those things, your worship, may be taken for granted, but they are a huge problem for people who live with dementia every day. So there is a, smaller things that are being, little things are being presented, which the staff will work with all our departments, trying to see how we could be more aware of the, of making our city a dementia-friendly community, your worship.
Thank you, and I, I think some of these things will help the rest of our citizens at the same time. It's not as if having better wayfinding isn't an improvement for everybody, it just particularly is helpful to people who have dementia. Councilor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. I'm very pleased to see this report coming forward, and I guess, when I saw a call come to the city, and I think we, as applied to be a part of this program, I was thought, oh, I should get involved in that one, right? It's like, so I'm very thankful to Councilor Dollywell and his committee and staff for, for taking up this challenge, because you can't be in, in everything, right? But as a lot of you will know, I have a close family member who was diagnosed with early-onset Alzheimer's at the age of 56. And so, it's, I think, one of the things that this report talks about is giving training to our staff about dementia and Alzheimer's and those things, because everybody does think it's a disease of the elderly, but it's not necessarily so. And so, it's actually becoming more common that people at a really young age are suffering from this, and so, when, when they're lost and confused, people may attribute that to some other cause, and sometimes not a very pleasant cause. And so, so when you have people that, again, are, are as young as Sherry, who suffer from these, this illness, and having it get progressively worse over time, it's, it's important that people understand, know how to react, and know how to provide assistance to them. So I'm especially pleased to see that the report recommends that our staff get education and training about dementia, and that we develop policies, especially in our more public access facilities, obviously, where, where these members of our community attend to, and so that they know how to deal with and react to sometimes unusual behavior exhibited by persons suffering from, from the, the whole spectrum of dementia-type disorders. So I'm very happy to see the report coming forward, feeling tremendously guilty that I wasn't part of the input of it, but I'm, I'm happy to see it and support the actions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have watched the decline of your sister Sherry over many, many years, and it's a very difficult thing for any family member to go through, is to, is to watch their, their sibling at a very young age be impacted by early-onset Alzheimer's. It's devastating, in fact, and I, I know that I had my, my uncle who never got to enjoy his retirement because he had early-onset dementia, and in fact, I can remember Counselor Evans, who was a tremendous counselor for the city of Burnaby, having to leave earlier than he would have wanted to as a result of the progression of dementia. So, you know, it touches each of us in different ways. I doubt there are many people around who haven't been touched by dementia, Alzheimer's in, in one of its forms, and this is coming out of our social sustainability study, in which we have extrapolated our inclusiveness to try to be very broad in looking at the spectrum of people in our community, and this is a, a hidden disability that people suffer, that may not be obvious immediately, but can end up confining someone in their home, so that they are, in effect, powerless to be able to enjoy the benefits of the community around them. And oftentimes, because of the difficulties in coping, is their caregivers are reluctant to take the dementia patient out and to engage them in the community. More understanding on the part of citizens, on the part of our staff, on the part of people who are engaging with dementia patients can improve the quality of their life over the, the last years that they have. And, and we often know that it's a progressive disease that is going to impact people, sometimes to the degree where eventually they forget how to be able to do the normal bodily functions. And so, it requires all of us to be understanding, and particularly the understanding of those caregivers who are struggling with this as part of their daily routine, as part of their life, because a patient who is suffering from dementia, it can be a very high demand on a person who is with them. So I, you know, I think it's, it's important that we do what we can as a society to be able to, to help. We're not going to be the perfect solution, and we're not going to be able to solve everything, but again, it's an area that our staff can be aware of and, and can try to help where possible. And it doesn't, when you think about the things being recommended, so easily we look at, at putting in curb cuts to make sure people with a visible disability can get around in our city, but we don't necessarily think about making our, our street signs more available to people so they can get a better idea of where they are. And those little things that we can do to make a difference are so important to people who are dealing with the everyday problems that are associated with dementia, and for those of us who've had it touch our family or our friends, I think we're very aware of it and, and are very supportive of making sure this, these programs are put into place. And I appreciate the government giving us additional monies to be able to do these studies, because it's not something you would have necessarily taken the initiative on without the encouragement that was provided by the province in looking for ways to support it. Councilor Johnson.
Your worship, I, I would like to compliment the committee. I am also a, a parent that had dementia, and it's, it's a very isolating disease, both, both for the person affected, and as you say, the caregiver or spouse. I'm really pleased to see the recommendations, we're, we're including some facilities in our park system, so that both the person with the disease can have a calm space, because they need calm. And- need calm, and that there's an ability for the caregiver or spouse to have a bit of a respite for 10 minutes or so while that person's enjoying the nature of the park or recreation facility. It's a scary disease. People don't, you know, get to the point where they don't even know their kids, they don't know their spouses, they don't know whoever, and it's pretty scary to both the person who has the disease and everybody else. So I think this is really a good, positive step on the city's behalf.
If you've seen the look of terror in the eyes of someone who has dementia, when they're out of control, where they're lost, is that it's heartbreaking.
Especially at Costco, I must say.
Yeah. Counselor Dollywell.
Just very quickly, Your Worship, which I forgot to mention, one of the things in this one is also creating awareness for general public as well, because there's some stigma to this as well, but the purpose of this one is to eliminate that part of it. This isn't something that people should be, somehow feel that they are at fault, because they caught this disease and people aren't talking about it. So one of the things is to create awareness from general public as well, to do what they do, that they offer, that this is not aging thing, that everybody's going to go, this is a disease that can strike anybody at any age, and it needs to be also recognized that as such, and we all offer any help that we can, through actions, through learning, and through providing more courageous words to the caregivers, that this is something where they got to get, that people enjoy their life and have quality of life while they suffer through this. I just want to quickly make that point, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Dollywell, and it is important that we use this bully pulpit to be able to talk about these issues. You know, the idea that we're here in council and talking about the realities of dementia in people's lives, and saying, small role that cities can play to be able to help, whether it's through parks and recreation or other departments, those are some of the steps that can be taken to try to assist people in dealing with what is a devastating disease. So we appreciate the work that our staff is doing, and we appreciate the work the committee did in examining this issue. All right. And with that, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to the city manager's report. Item one is to seek council approval of capital funding to pursue demolition of 7252 Kingsway. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item two, this is demolition of 7282 Kingsway, and this is approval of capital funding to pursue demolition of 7282 Kingsway. Questions called. Both these items are older buildings that are beyond us utilizing them. It is important that we are able to avoid the additional expenses required to be invested into these buildings, when we know that eventually the buildings are going to be torn down, and that new structures will be built. So moving this forward is avoiding what have been a series of problems in the community. We do not want derelict buildings from the city to become problematic for residents in the community, and that's where this was going. So elimination of these buildings, these to be able to do new things with that property is very important. So with that, ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item three.
This is to provide council with a... Just very quickly, I think I was trying to follow what has transpired over a few years, and then I got lost in this one. I just, very quickly, I know the director of planning, building and planning, would know top of his head. So the idea here is that this has been consolidated to, previously what was already sort of building up to a certain capacity, this doesn't change the capacity as such, but the quest is to open up to the balconies, basically. Is that the essence of the whole thing?
Your Worship, the basic component of the application is the casino has one liquor license that covers the entire facility. So you are correct that there's no expansion of that liquor license capacity in this application, but they want to create a second, or an individual license for the Persona's restaurant, so it can operate under one license with the balance of the existing license covering the casino. So that's the first part, is just to separate the Persona's restaurant off from the main license, in order to allow family dining, the ability for families to bring children into that restaurant during, before 10:00 PM at night. The other aspect of it is they're looking to formalize a permission to have background music on all of the patio, so no amplified music and no live music on the patio, but the ability to sit outside and hear music coming over a speaker system, while still being able to carry on a normal conversation at your table.
Well, thank you for that, Director. So this will go to a consultation, public, would there be hearing on it, or just consultation?
We follow the normal notification process that we follow for public hearing, but there's not an actual hearing. The submission of comments is made to the department, and then we report that back to council.
Thank you very much.
I can tell you, Counselor Dollywell, that more comments, or if you see them...
Yes, Your Worship, yeah, thank you. I understand, as the director of planning stated, that, for example, because the casino access is restricted to anyone 19 and over, so then that means that the restaurant facilities can't be used, because you can't get to them without going through the casino. And so that's the issue. I think that what they're trying to do is make the Persona's area, which I think most of councilors have attended to, and the patio there, a family-friendly, as per, we now know, the liquor licensing allows Mayor Corrigan to bring his brand-new grandbabies into the bubble, right? And so this is legal now in the province, but because you can't get to the restaurant without going through the casino floor, that's not permitted. So I think that's what, at least part of this application, has to do with, so that they can open up access to Persona's restaurant and the patio area, and then hotel guests with children can take them there for student entertainment, as anybody else in the community could. But the way the liquor license is divided up right now, not possible to do so.
Moving on to bylaws, Counselor McDonnell.
Thank you, Your Worship. For second reading, I move the bylaw 13785 be read a second time.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
For reconsideration and final adoption, I move the bylaw 13786 now be reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the corporate CEO will fix thereto.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. New business? Is there any new business? Counselor Balko.
Just very quickly, Your Worship, in the purple pages, there's a letter from the, I didn't even know this body existed, the International Airlines Council of Canada, decrying the potential privatization of airports in this country. And I know that Counselor Johnson raised the issue when it initially came forward many months ago, but apparently, all the protests around the country in regards to privatizing our airports hasn't had any impact on the current federal government. And I don't think it's a stretch, because wherever this has gone forward, cities or countries with ports, Australia, for example, started privatizing their ports, and before you know it, everything that was built with public monies was turned over to the private sector. So there's acknowledgement in there, Your Worship, of the letter you sent, and the minister, Mr. Garnot, I don't know that you were happy with his response, but anyways, at least there's acknowledgement of receipt of the letter. But again, I think we should keep an eye on this one, and we're all going to, or most of us are going to UBCM, and I'm sure this is going to be a topic there, if not at the FCM, whenever that comes around. So thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, and I, you know, I wrote the letter in regard to particularly the Vancouver Airport, but I think our position is similar in regard to other airports across the land. I don't know why there is such a rush by the neoliberal element to sell all of the assets that Canadian people have built up over many, many, many decades. It is unseemly, the fact that there is this desperation to replace actually having tax dollars support the system, with selling the assets that we have, and saying somehow this is a magic solution. We've seen the sale of so much property by the provincial government right across British Columbia, and now we're seeing the federal government look at opportunities to be able to sell off more and more of the assets that all of us have enjoyed. And in many cases, these are money-making assets. Airports make them money, as a result of the work that's been done by the individual boards, to make sure that they're economically viable. They've been able to pay the government lease payments, and there's a continuing source of revenue that's going into the government. Plus, the government ultimately has the control of what happens with those airports, which is absolutely critical in ensuring the public interest in transportation, like airlines coming into our country. To lose the ability to control that, to be able to implement good public policy by turning it over to the private sector, just seems to me to be irresponsible. And I don't even know why this subject is being discussed in Ottawa. And I've been kind of surprised that there hasn't been nearly the kind of resistance you would expect from the opposition parties in regard to that, probably because the Conservatives have the same policy of sell anything that isn't nailed down. But New Democrats should at least be standing up on this issue and saying it's unconscionable to sell these assets. So I hope people out there are paying attention, because there seems to be a failure on the part of the public to recognize that once sold, these will never come back into public possession. Once they've been privatized, we all know that the international trade agreements will not allow you to bring them back into the public sector. So once it's lost, it's lost forever. And I don't know why people, why this generation is so prepared to allow the things that were built by their ancestors, by the previous generations, allow them to simply be sold for political gain in the present, because that's all it is, to not actually make people pay for what they're doing, but to simply sell an asset that's irreplaceable. Doesn't make any sense. All right. And with that, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you very much, council and staff, and thank you to everyone who was with us tonight.